Good evening.
Evening.
We call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissions to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting improperly advertised.
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker, good to see you. Let us stand now. Pastor Henry Frazier is with us again. He from work to the commission meeting. He's going to leave us an invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for the privilege to gather here to bring great minds together that we might do great things for this community, even for this nation. God, we pray that you will lead us and guide us. Give us all the insight. Give us the wisdom that is necessary that we might make the right decisions and the right choices, not ones that favor us, but one that favor all, one that makes you pleased by the choices and decisions that we make. We thank you now in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Our minutes from the month of September will require our approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion secondly, we approve the minutes September 1st and 17th as presented. Any discussion on that? There be none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Bowens, you good?
Yes, sir. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. This time, it's perfect timing. I wasn't sure what time the coach would be able to arrive, but you know, we annually we have the big Liberty County Bradwell Classic. And that was, really, they've played back-to-back games this year. But two weeks ago, they played the first game of the season out off the field and rained out. A little lightning, too, so they called the game early. But there was a winner before they called the game, and a winner is a winner. So, you know, it's been our honor for several years now presenting this trophy. I've lost in, I don't know how many years now it's been going on.
Uh, over about 14, Jim.
But I can say that Liberty has been very successful when it comes to it. So, we're proud tonight to have Coach Warner here, and he brought one of his players here to receive the trophy. So, listen, Coach, we've been doing it a little bit differently. Let's see, if you and your player would come up, please, sir?
You have to leave your player.
Okay. That's the coach you got. Who you got with you?
That's my son.
That's your son? All right. Oh, he's the driver. Doesn't that a driver? Doesn't that a driver? Yeah, you stand with him.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say, I watched the video of that, Coach.
Uh huh.
I was like, I've been cheating a little bit.
That's right. That's right.
Well, Coach, I'm going to let you make some remarks, but we also didn't, we'd come down and present to you.
You know, it's always an honor to come before you guys and just say, you know, it's been a trying year, you know, with all this COVID-19 stuff. And, you know, it was difficult for both us and Bradwell because we kind of got a late start with everybody. We didn't start back up until middle of Sept-, well, 1st of September, and then we had about two and a half weeks to prepare for each other. And, you know, I take my hat off to them, you know, they play hard, we play hard, you know, just hope that both teams continue to improve because I think both teams can make the playoffs and give the entire city, uh, two teams to cheer for. So, I'm pulling for them. Hopefully, they're pulling for us and hopefully the community get behind both teams and make them successful.
We will, sir, and thank you for that. Thank you for sharing that. We appreciate your heart when it comes to that.
Yes, sir.
Permission, let's go down. Let's see, shall we, Coach, come on up here.
Okay.
Commissioner Gillis, will you travel with him?
Yeah.
Because we got to have the, where's the emblem?
Should be right along the.
Commissioner Walton, will you all come to you?
Now, Commissioner Stevens, I was trying to remember, is it time for you guys to keep this one?
Yes, sir.
I thought you would know.
I thought you would know. I thought you would know.
Come on in.
Make sure we have Bradwell, shall we?
Are we good?
Turn around. Right there we go.
There it is.
He's running backwards, Barry.
Yeah, he is running backwards.
Everybody in?
Yep.
Okay, good deal.
Hold on.
Hold on, Pat. We got a part B to this today a little bit. If we had more time, we'd have made it a little more.
You begin to be like Bob Springa.
Hold on. Next slide, please. Now, this kind of gentleman is now celebrating a hundred wins. Congratulations, sir.
Can't do it without my community.
Continued success.
All right.
Continued success. Is it 19?
Woo!
Man, I remember when you went down there. Good Lord.
Time flies.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, son. All right, okay. All righty. New business LCPC. Jeff, you're the man tonight, huh?
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the board.
Good evening, sir.
We have a couple of zoning cases for you to consider tonight. The first one is a rezoning request, item number 2020-30-LC.
Chairman, can you all, can you go ahead to?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Chair Tenenbaum motion to go into public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor? We're now in public here.
Thanks, sir. Uh, this petition was submitted by Jahl Services LLC. The guy's name is Justin Calvin. Uh, he's the owner. He wants to rezone .89 acres of land, more or less, on EG Miles Parkway from AR1 to B2, General, your general commercial district. It's parcel number 036D021. It's located at 1393 196 West, and the parcel is located in Ms. Thrift's district.
Yes, sir.
Next slide, please. Uh, you'll see here, a, on the right, photograph of the property. You can see that there's an existing house here. It's a dwelling and.
The minus?
Main.
Main.
There's an existing house there with, I presume they've got water and sewer in order to have a house there. So, water and sewer is available to the site. I guess, I think it's a septic tank and maybe a well. Uh, and then you see the ad there and the Coastal Courier there where the meeting was advertised, and you see the sign on the, on the front. So, the meeting, I mean, the rezoning request has been properly advertised. Next slide, please. And this is just a general location. Uh, you can see right here, this is the Highway 196. Right here is the location where the new Wind Electric is going, just to kind of give you a reference. Uh, Griffin, the road to Griffin Park is here. That's Miles Crossing. So, it's right over here in this general area right here. And as I said, it's just .89 acres of land. Next slide, please. And this is just a closer shot. You can see the existing house on the property, and the house, uh, the property goes back, a little ways back behind the house there. Initially, when the applicant came in, he said he wanted to build a, like a warehouse behind it to store some appliances and things that he sells. I think he since changed his mind on that. I don't think he intends to build the warehouse back there, but he would like to proceed with the commercial B2 zoning on the property. Next slide, please. And of course, this is the current zoning map. You can see the property next door to it is B2. Of course, the property over here across the street is the property that's currently being built on by Wind Electric. That, that's B2 as well. Uh, this is the area where it kind of goes in and out of the city at this point, like this area right here is Griffin Park. You can see that hatch there. That's, that's, that's the city of Hinesville, uh, in the, in the city of Hinesville. This area, of course, is in the unincorporated county. It's own, currently zone AR1. He's asking for the B2, like the one next door. Next slide, please. Our zoning analysis, the planning commission met on September the 15th, and they considered these things, and I'll go through these briefly and then give you their recommendation. Uh, the property does have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned. Uh, it does conform to the JLS plan. Uh, property, uh, the proposed use does conform to the county comprehensive plan because 196 is considered a mixed-use corridor. So, this would be appropriate use, uh, zoning for that area. This will not have a adverse impact on nearby, on the use and values of nearby properties. It's suitable in use of nearby uses. As I said, there are a number of commercial, um, uses within this area. Uh, the zoning proposal will not create an undue burden on transportation, schools, uh, streets and transit. Uh, this would not allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals. It would not create a domino effect, and we haven't noted any historical sites that would be negatively impacted by this. Uh, the property is not in a flood hazard area, and it would not be considered spot zoning because there are other similar properties around it. And there are no, no unique conditions with support or denial of this. And as I said, the planning commission met on September the 15th, had a public hearing, and they recommend approval of this request with standard conditions. Be glad to answer any questions that you have about it.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Did, did they have anyone?
Oppose?
Oppose or?
There were, there was a couple there, Mr. and Mrs. Wells, who live right behind this property. If, if you could back up to the area, I can kind of show you where they are. They came in and they were, they weren't really opposed as much as they were just concerned about what he was proposing to do with it.
Right.
They, they live right here on this property. So, they do share a boundary with this.
So, he doesn't own that little corner there that's already?
This, no, this is, this is owned by a separate person.
And then the church is over to the left?
There's a church here on this property.
Okay. So, there was really no any, no opposition as to what he was?
Only Wells were just concerned about what he was doing there.
Okay. Ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendations of LCPC to rezone that piece of property there.
Second?
Let me get my.
Any further discussion, any other questions?
There be none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Oppose? All right.
Thank you. Hey, Chairman, our, our next case, if you'll advance the slide, is a request for a variance.
All right, let us come out of public hearing. Then Chair Tenenbaum motion to come out of public hearing and back into regular session?
Go move.
Second? All in favor? Raise your hand. All right, you may proceed, sir.
Okay, this is a petition that was submitted by BSC Outdoor Advertising for a billboard distance variance. Uh, your current ordinance requires a thousand feet separation between billboards anywhere in the county, uh, and the applicant would like to have that reduced to 750 feet because there are other billboards within 750 feet of the, of the location where they want to put this billboard. Uh, the property is, uh, the property owner is Bertha Wyndham. Um, the petitioner is asking for the distance to be lowered to approximately 750 feet. Uh, property is further described as parcel number 120070. Billboard would be located near the intersection, be located on Highway 84, near the intersection of 84 and Leroy Cofer Highway, and this parcel is located in District 6. Slide?
District 5. District 5.
District 6. It's in Mr. Gillis' district.
That's 5.
He's 5.
That's 5.
Garrett's 5.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I miscounted. I thought.
Hey, don't worry about it, Jeff. They've been getting me mixed up ever since I've been here 12 years.
That's okay, they ride the whole county anyway.
Okay, this is a, this is a picture of the ad in the Coastal Courier, and this is a picture, uh, standing on the property looking back toward the intersection of Leroy Cofer and 81, uh, 84. That's the, that's the sign there on the property showing that we advertised it. Next slide, please. And this is just a picture of the, you can see the intersection of Leroy Cofer there with 84, and you can see this triangular-shaped piece of property. You might recall, um, the applicant, or the, not the applicant, uh, the property owner came in about five years ago or so and asked to rezone this property.
I remember that.
At the time, their envisioned use was a fruit stand, and that fruit stand never came to fruition. So, this property is still zoned B2, but as you can see, it's kind of a, an odd-shaped piece of property. Even though there's an acre there, because of the odd shape, it'd be really hard to do much of anything with that property with all the setbacks and everything that would be required. Anyway, the, the proposed sign would be, uh, the proposal, the sign would be 10 feet off of the right of way, which is required. Uh, the pole would take about 36 inches of ground space. That's just how big, the big monopole, uh, would be for the billboard, and the sign would have an overall 25-foot height. Slide, please. This is just a overall, a general location. Again, you can see where Leroy Cofer comes down. It's right here adjacent to the intersection. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, you can't really, can't see this very good, so I'm going to point this out to you. This is the location of the billboard that's being proposed. You can see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 billboards right in this area. I think most of these might be owned by the applicant, but the closest one, this one, is about 750 feet away. And as I said, the ordinance requires billboards to be 1,000 feet separated between each other. Next slide, please. And this is a view, I apologize, you can't really see in this, in this light.
Need the lights dim?
Cut the lights off. Yeah, that might help. Nobody goes to sleep.
Okay, so you can see, this is, it's a standing in the intersection of Leroy Cofer, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then there's one down there. So, that's, that's how close this site is to those existing billboards. Next slide, please. And there's just another one standing at a different position, uh, near the, near the point of this property, and you can see the proximity of the other billboards. Next slide, please. And then this is standing right in the middle of this property, looking at that closest one that's 750 feet away from, from this billboard. Next, next slide, please. And then, of course, this is just a GIS measurement showing the distance between this billboard and the existing billboard there that's 748 feet away. Next slide. And you can see that this property is zoned B2. We said y'all zoned that about five years ago. This is a salt of property, it's zoned B2, above those will be appropriate for, uh, billboards. Next slide, please. So, the conditions for granting the variance, the planning commission looked at this at their meeting on September the 15th. It did not meet any of your conditions for granting a variance, and in fact, the planning commission notes that, uh, the location that's signed there might actually distract drivers at the intersection of Leroy Cofer and Highway 84. Next slide, please. So, the planning commission on September 15th recommended disapproval of this variance request, but I'd be glad to answer any question, and this has been advertised in public here if you want to take comment. The applicant is here.
Yeah. Same routine questions, was there any opposition?
No, there was no opposition when I passed the planning commission meeting.
You said applicant's here?
Yep.
Downstairs?
No, no, they're right here.
Oh. I thought I saw the, Bertha Wyndham's name.
Yeah, that's what, it's, it's spelled different.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Brown, where is this in reference to the possible locating of the Hinesville bypass?
When home, okay.
We're not certain yet.
Well, we're not. In fact, the, you know, the original bypass piece that was proposed was going to come out on the other side of Homestown Road towards Midway.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm sorry, a little bit this side of Homestown.
Mm-hmm. But not right there.
But, but not, but not right there. There was a talk about making a link there one time.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay.
Then they want to zigzag it.
I mean, that's not even, hasn't even been planned.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished?
Um, I saw what y'all had about the distraction, and, uh, I know for the amount of what it's sitting, where it's going to be sitting at, probably be a pretty sight to look at, but also is, I'm looking at the amount of accidents that's already happening there from, I like me and Sheriff talked about it one time before, about them running the, uh, running the stop light, and, uh, don't know if this is, would this add to it or not?
And that was one of the concerns that the, that was brought up at the planning commission meeting, that as you're, as you're looking, as you ought to be looking for traffic to make that right turn, because it is sort of a right on red type of signal, you might be looking at that, at that billboard there, and you might take your eyes off the road for a minute.
Yeah, because it's already dangerous enough. Uh, actually, we wrote to the State Department and asked them to come, take a look at it and see, could it be changed to, uh, no turn on red? And they wrote back so that they hadn't had any accidents down there because of the red light.
I think it's a pretty safe intersection right there. I mean, you know, people with red light, they gonna stop, they gonna look.
They don't look.
Real big problems there with that intersection. And they stop coming the other way. Last, oh, golly, I mean, you could have an accident at any intersection. That's just the nature of the thing. That's not a dangerous intersection. What's the distance sort of cutting through the field? What's the distance going down the road and then taking a left down the highway? Y'all measure that?
We did not measure that, but I think.
You didn't measure that?
We did not measure that.
You seem like you wouldn't measure that, because really, you can't see that billboard from that highway so much. Seems like you'd go down the highway and measure the distance and get that 1,000 feet. Come on.
The ordinance says the distance between, it doesn't say about.
You're cutting through the field.
Around the road.
It's not like you down the highway, you getting one sign here and 1,000 feet to the next sign. You cut, you looking through the field. But you go here, it's two different roads now, not on the same road. And I'm thinking, when they wrote this ordinance up, or we designed it, that it was probably, you know, something, this never even came up. If it had come up, I would think they would have looked at it a little differently. But we're talking about billboards on the same, you know, on same street.
Yeah.
I'm thinking there's more than 1,000 feet. You come down the road and you take a left instead of going straight through like a crow flies. I would thought maybe y'all should have taken that into consideration.
Well, that's what I was taking into consideration, not them.
Yes, that, Mr. Chairman, that was my question, and looking at the vicinity on the map, the 748 feet, but the, the other five signs that are kind of clustered right in there, they're not 1,000.
They, they were done before the ordinance, uh, the ordinance used to have 500 feet between signs, and those were done then, but, uh, you know, several years ago, back in, I think, 2012, the ordinance was changed to increase it from a, from 500 to 1,000 feet separation between billboards. So, that's why this one is different. If it were under the old ordinance, it would, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here.
Right. Well, I'm kind of like Commissioner Bowen, you go to the stop, and then you got to turn left, and then there's the sign, or where we see it on the map, is where they're wanting to place it at. So, I'm like him, going through the field is not doing due diligence for the footage of it. Um, and I don't see where it would be a bearing on an accident or whatever, because it looks like they're going to put it to the left of the intersection rather than right in front of you coming up to the stop. So.
I'm sorry, Sheriff Sykes, you want to speak?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what you.
Connie.
It's on a separate highway completely. Originally for distance between billboards.
On the same road.
The state of Georgia recognizes 500 feet. The city of Hinesville, Richland came up with the ordinance, reached the county, adopted it at a later date before he left his division as wherever he was. And he's the one that put the 1,000 feet in there, and he, they've always interpreted it as 1,000 feet in any direction.
That's a promise.
That's why we're asking you to go to 1,000 feet. But it is on a separate highway from when I said this is on highway.
I don't think as a general rule, that's a bad requirement, but I'm, I'm like you, that's why they come before us, because we get to do the consideration and discuss the variables. So, we appreciate your commissions for doing what they did, and as our job, do what we do. That's, that's, that's why we're here. That's why we're here.
This is in, in, uh, my district, Mr. Chairman.
Is it yours, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can I say a comment before you?
Yes, sir. Whenever you ready for a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'm ready.
You know, well, and of course, maybe every driver is different, but I ain't driving up there looking at. I mean, I guess they want the sign to be visible, but, but man, when I'm driving, I'm driving, I'm not going to just give all my attention to the, to the, to the billboard, yeah, to the billboard. And then you said it's a unique piece of property, hard to use, somebody owns that property, they need to have some use for it. So, if it can't be this, then, then my thing is let it, let it be this, you know.
Yeah, I, I went down there that way, um, yesterday on my way to Savannah, and I came back that way, and those other signs that you just showed on your slide, I didn't see none of them.
You didn't intend to.
I didn't see none of them, so, um, I, I don't, um, and you're right, Commissioner Bowen, um, you know, you will have accidents, you could have accidents. Um, I doubt that, uh, accidents are caused by people rubbernecking that, um, billboards. I think it's more because of just distracted driving or any other, um, any other distraction that, that, that they can have, not paying attention to the road more so than paying attention to.
Or speeding, uh.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's.
Intoxicated, what, what have you.
Chairman, and to piggyback on what Commissioner Gillis said, there's 17 signs down there right now within, I mean, you can throw a baseball, a good baseball player can throw it. I couldn't, but there's 17 of them, and it looks like that needs to be revisited. I mean, there's enough right here tonight to say, let's look at this again, because if you do pull up to that intersection, just like you said, coming up Leroy Cofer to turn right to come to Hinesville, if there's a semi in either lane there on the left-hand side, you can't see the Homestown Road. So, you couldn't see the sign, and that wouldn't make a difference. I mean, if you had maybe a wreck there, people would notice that, but if you're at that intersection, you're going home or you're going to work. I mean, and I don't see, I mean, the 1,000 foot or the 5,000 foot or the 250 feet, I don't think that would make any difference with the wrecks, or the DOT would have said, hey, let's don't even put those signs on roads like this. So, it does need to be revisited. I hope y'all will. I mean, look at it, and let's see what we got to do to, to try to change, not the whole picture, but let's just try to change to see what we're doing. Like Commissioner Bowen said, we may want to go down the highway instead of going across somebody's field, but I don't see no issue in it. I mean, I drive it, and I know Commissioner Stevens drives it a lot, but they already said it was in my district, and now we give it to Gary's.
We took it back.
I'm like you, whatever y'all want to do.
Yeah.
Chair Tenenbaum motions.
I'm making a motion we approve the.
Well, hey, I guess, I guess it's Pat's district.
Well, I'm sorry, Gary, I just, hey, I apologize.
No, no, it, it, it don't matter.
Same thing y'all do to me.
I, I would, um, go ahead, Pat, and I'll second it.
No, no, go ahead, I'll second it. Make a motion.
Yeah, because, you know, it's not that much activity in District 5, so every now and then I get a chance to.
I'll just call it off.
But, um, you know, and I appreciate the planning commission and, um, you know,
I didn't see none of them, so, um, I, I don't, um, and, and you're right, um, Commissioner Bowen, um, you know, you will have accidents, you could have accidents, um, I doubt that, uh, accidents are caused by, um, people rub, rubbernecking that, um, billboards, I think it's more because of just, uh, distracted driving, or any other, um, any other distraction that, that, that they can have. Uh, not paying attention to the road, more so than paying attention to.
Or speeding, uh.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's.
Intoxicated, what, what have you.
Okay. Chairman, and to piggyback on what Mr. Gillis said, there's seventeen signs down there right now within, I mean, you can throw a baseball, a good baseball player can throw it, I couldn't, but there's seventeen of them, and it, it looks like that needs to be revisited. I mean, there's enough right here tonight to say, let's look at this again, because if you do pull up to that intersection, just like you said, coming up to DeWorcofer, to turn right to come to Hinesville, if there's a semi in either lane there on the left-hand side, and you can't see the Moorestown Road, so you couldn't see the sign, and that wouldn't make a difference. I mean, if you had maybe a, a wreck there, people would notice that, but if you're at that intersection, you're going home, or you're going to work, I mean, and I don't see.
Mm-mm.
That, I mean, the thousand foot, or the five thousand foot, or the two hundred and fifty feet, I don't think that would make any difference with the wrecks, or the DOT would have said, hey, let's don't even put those signs on roads like this. So, um, it does need to be revisited, I hope y'all will, I mean, look at it, and let's see what we got to do to, to try to change. Not the whole picture, but let's just try to change to see what we're doing. Like Mr. Bowen said, we may want to go down the highway instead of going across somebody's field. But I don't see no issue in it, I mean, I drive it, and I know Commissioner Stevens drives it a lot, but they already said it was in my district, now we give it to Gary.
We took it back.
I'm like you, whatever y'all want to do.
Yeah.
Chairman, take a motion.
I'm making a motion, we approve the, uh.
Hey, I guess it's, I guess it's Pat's district.
Well, I'm sorry, Gary, I, I just, hey, I.
No, no, it, 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 it don't matter, um.
Same thing y'all do to me.
I, I would, um, go ahead, Pat, and I'll second it.
No, no, go ahead, I'll second it, make a motion.
Yeah, because, you know, it's not that much activity in District Five, so every now and then I get a chance to, to, to. But, um, you know, and I appreciate the planning commission and, um, you know, for their diligence and everything, but, um, Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the variance.
All right.
Um, twenty twenty dash zero thirty-three dash L C.
All right. Motion, secondly, we approve the, the variance as presented by S P C. Uh, and once again, we do, we commend your commissions for their overview, but thank them for passing it on to us, yeah. And, and maybe we do need to look at.
Right.
Just don't, I wouldn't make that a priority issue, but maybe something we need to discuss, as, as well as perhaps, I was thinking as he was speaking. Most times, most times, those billboards are spread out, but maybe we need to look at intersections, how, you know, I know you said those are, they were grandfathered in, so, so that's a done deal. But in the future of a future growth there, you might want to limit the number that can be at any one, like, major intersection.
This was unusual because it's on two roads, I mean, most of the time they're on the same road, and you just measure a straight line from one to another.
But, you, you know, Ms. Chairman, it, it's good, I mean, you know, they could revisit it if they want to, but, um, you know, it's good to have a, a ordinance.
Mm-hmm, it is.
And it's also good to know that you can vote for them. I mean, so I, I don't have a problem with the way it's written, because if, um, if we want to.
Come to us.
Come to us, and we want to approve it, you know, we, we can always do that.
Yeah, we can, okay. All right, so you're done? Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Please lead to record the vote.
Oh, we didn't vote.
Take a vote.
All in favor, sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
I want to pose.
Thank you.
Want to press.
Want to pose? All right, personnel request, Tax Commissioner Virgil Jones. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
How you doing today, Chairman?
Very well, thank you, yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight, um, for a special personnel request. I tried to get the request to each of you at the same time, I emailed everyone except Commissioner Bowen. At the time, I didn't have an email address for him, and I later found an old email address, and I sent it there. Then I finally put a copy in your box, so I hope everybody had a chance to review my request. The request was not put in prior to now, because when we had our, our standard budget request process, um, a lot of things that were going to happen, or that's happening now, I did, I was unaware of. And we didn't have a standard, um, budget request process this time. So I hope everyone had a chance to review my request, and to see all the various things that are not just going on in the Tax Commissioner's office, as it relates to our Motor Vehicle Department and our Property Tax Department, but just a lot of new things that are coming up. I mean, the county's growing, and as the county grows, and everything changes in the county, it, it impacts the Tax Commissioner's office, um, you know, tremendously. Um, we have a lot of new initiatives coming, um, up, as a matter of fact, in October, I mentioned in my letter, um, the new project that the Department of Revenue was requiring us to implement. Um, our I T department was in my office today, we have to now install scanners, and we have to start scanning, um, all of our title documents to the state. After we help each of our, our customers, along with a number of other things, I don't want to go through them all, you know, standing here, so. I hope everybody, everyone had a chance to see some of the things that, um, I, you know, brought to your attention as to why we do need additional personnel. And in this particular case, one additional person, um, for my office. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions, um, if anybody has any or any, address any concerns.
I have one, uh, what, what district you in, Virgil?
It's interesting, I'm actually, Commissioner Stevens' district.
Well, well, I mean, I'm talking about your office over there.
My office district.
If, if you don't get it right now.
Honestly, I, also what district this building sits in.
Oh, man.
Mr. Gillit, must be your district, right?
Well, I'll take it, but I, I think it's Eddie's.
I, 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 I don't know either, I do not.
I think it is, Commissioner.
That, that side of Main Street, I think belongs to Eddie, I, I got the other side.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Um, now generally, you, you, you do, you in your office, you do a good job of with your budget.
Yes, sir.
All my years of being a commissioner, I, I've not noticed I have had a problem with you in any budget overruns. I know we had to purchase some equipment one time that was.
Yes, sir.
And, and I don't, but generally, so I guess my question is, based on, on your budget now, will you, Mr. Brown, can it absorb this position?
The budget that was approved, no, sir, will not, because it was approved as, with the personnel I have now. Um, initially, I believe Mr. Brown recommended that, it's McLaughlin reviewed what it would take, and, uh, I'll ask Mr. Brown to address that.
All right.
The budget that currently stands, and, and mainly due to the COVID and some of the stuff that's caused, um, if it stays on the same course it's on, probably will exceed this year what was originally budgeted. That's without the new person.
Mm-hmm.
But, again, that's absent, absent the normal COVID conditions, which nobody could project, and what he's had, what he's had to, to do there to try to stay open, that's, that's the sole cause of that. So I, I, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't know what level or anything you want to bring the person in at, maybe you've got those numbers on, on what the annual salary would be. But as far as the budget goes, right, it's, it's, it's in pretty good shape.
Okay, all right, that's what we need to know, that's what we need to know. You have a question for Mr. Jones?
I don't know.
All right, the gentleman has come, made his sincere request, and the chair will entertain a motion. You heard Mr. Brown's, uh, response to the budget.
Here, I make a motion.
Thanks so, man, thanks so.
I don't have a problem with, uh, with, I read your letter and, and looked at it, um, still believe, you know, a constitutional officer, which you are.
Yes.
There's, there's a, there's some privilege there, some.
There are.
But I do appreciate you.
I do too.
Sending the letter.
Right, and coming forward.
Because it's, um, you know, it's something that we don't want to, you know, just like anybody else, we don't want us to hit it when we can't cover it up, so, uh, as long as, as long as Joey and you have talked and Kim, I don't have a problem with it, and I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Let Mr. Jones go ahead and fill his position.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, since he lives in my district, I'm going to second it.
All right, motion in a second, we approve his request, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for how you approached that with us.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the spirit of collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Justice Senator Barnes.
This, for, for the record, uh, Mr. Lucas is, uh, not here.
Yep.
He, I think he appeared before you, he did the bond underwriting, and the gentleman before you.
Guru.
Seen him a little while, is, uh, Jim Pennell. His firm did, uh, all the legal matters related to the bonds, so he has that information for you tonight.
Ms. Chairman, members of the question, uh, my name is Jim Pennell, and, and it is our privilege to be before you again, we've been privileged to serve as bond counsel for the county and the Public Facilities Authority over the years. And we did a refunding issue, as you know, in two thousand and seventeen, that was purchased by AmerisBank, when I thought interest rates couldn't go any lower. And that was two point six two percent interest, and now, these bonds, and I handed out a little thing to show you, a little spreadsheet that shows that the bonds were marketed yesterday at an interest cost of point nine five percent. I asked Mr. Lucas on the telephone, because he could not be here, and neither, uh, was Trey Monroe available, who's with Stifel Nicolaus, when they marketed the bonds yesterday. I said, well, who in the world buys bonds that pay point three percent? And he didn't give me a good answer, but apparently they're money market funds and others. Treasuries are so low right now, interest rates are so low, that you can see on this bond pricing sheet what the yield is. What happens in these financings now, because the yields are so low, the underwriters want to buy the bonds at those interest rates you see on that column, three percent, four percent, five percent. And then that explains why they are only issuing, you, you're only required to issue ten million, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And they, because they are paying a premium to buy those bonds, they're paying more than the face value of them, generates a premium of over two million dollars. When you look at this sheet on the pricing sheet, where it goes, ten million, nine hundred and thirty thousand par amount, with a premium of two million, ninety-eight thousand, which then allows you to pay off over twelve million dollars worth of bonds that were issued in two thousand and seventeen. So you're, you're, what you end up doing, you're paying back, um, uh, more in interest, the, uh, o- over the time of it, the purchasers like that, it helps to market the bonds. But that's, that kind of explains those numbers, because when you look at them cold, it doesn't make any sense, well, gosh, you're issuing ten million, nine hundred thousand, how you going to pay off twelve million with it? The bonds were marketed yesterday, uh, the, the authority met this afternoon, it adopted its bond resolution. Uh, the resolution that you have before you approves the intergovernmental contract with the authority, and as you, this intergovernmental contract, there are no other revenues other than appropriations that y'all make to pay the debt service on those bonds under that contract. So if the, if the commission approves this resolution tonight, um, Mr. Davis will file the validation of the bonds later this week. Bond hearing has already been preliminarily scheduled on the twenty-sixth of the month, they'll close on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Uh, the overall debt service savings, um, you've got on here are, let me see here, um. Well, present value savings, excuse me, the overall savings are on this sheet, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at present value, it's almost eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Over a period of how long?
Over a period of eight years.
Eight years?
Yes, sir. And so, um, it's a six point two six percent, uh, present value savings, uh, which is well above the underwriting standards that you generally look at in the industry.
Let me ask you, if in the future, if the interest rates go up on these bonds, they would, are we locked in at this forever?
You're, you're locked in at this for the, the full eight years, these bonds, the way they're marketed, they're not callable, this is the end of refundings. It was actually turned out to be a really good move in two thousand and seventeen to place them with a bank, because as interest rates kept going, you could refund them again. And so that's what you're doing now, but now you are locked in the next eight years, there won't be any other refundings on the, on this money.
Bet the rates will get in lower either.
Of course, that's what I've said in two thousand and seventeen, so, so I know.
Yeah, that money. I assume Joey's looked at this pretty.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Could I ask him?
Sure, 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 I mean, we.
Now, could I ask your thing, I know you probably, tell him, Ms. Chairman, you probably looked at this pretty hard, do you have a recommendation on it?
We did, um, and recommendations is definitely to do it, but I think we, at the beginning with Mr. Lucas, and that we might save somewhere around, you know, half a million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, and so as you see, it turns out to be even more.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yes, sir, about eight hundred thousand dollars substantial, over that. I, I will note, too, we, in this, we had to go through a bond rating, uh, and we do that with Moody's, Moody's upgraded our rating, which is attributable to the committee, and your financial standing and your practices solely. And so we're up to a double A three rating now, which is great. So that is, that's the other reason that we were able to get that interest rate.
Could you ask him what district he lives in?
I'll move down here if I need to.
Hurry, please. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Bowen.
I entertain a motion to, uh, or make a motion that we approve.
Bond resolution?
I second it.
Thank you, sir, and let's paint this thing up early. Good thing for everybody, thank everybody. Thank you, sir, motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing such diligent work for us, years and years. Elmeg. You gentlemen, drive safely.
Come on, hurry up before Gary get back.
All right, quick, let's make a decision, how you going to divvy up your money?
Right.
Don't get down on my bottom question right off the bat, how are you going to divvy up your money?
You go cut him out.
So, I'm going to take this off, so I can, you can hear me a little bit better. All right, so I gave everybody a copy on your desk, just in case, because I, I emailed everybody a copy. Basically, we get, um, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents, which is our Elmeg formulae amount that we get from Department of Transportation. Uh, this year, we have to do thirty percent, um, when our T S P O S is not in effect until this, until after this was put in.
But it is in effect.
Get the ten percent.
Yeah, well, ten percent will kick in maybe till next year, so, um, we're, we're with thirty percent this year. Now, I'm getting some mixed messages from D O T about how the thirty or ten percent, when I read, if you, if you look at the third letter that I gave you. Down at the very bottom, it tells you a code section, forty-eight dash eight dash twenty-four, two forty-four D, if you read that, sounds like we should be getting ten percent, when we have our T S P O S in, in effect. But, you know, remember, this came out in July before our T S P O S. So this year, we're with a thirty percent. Next year, well, I want to make sure that we're getting what we should be getting by the code section. I did not mean for that to be such a side, side, uh, discussion, but it is something I'm trying to make sure that I get covered in. So basically, um, the Elmeg money plus our portion, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety, seven hundred and seventy-nine, nine dollars and seventy-four cents, is what we need to spend. Generally, we spend more than that, uh, we get more than our thirty percent. Uh, I want to just kind of run through, I'm not going to read all these numbers to you, um, I just want to hit a couple of highlights. There's a couple down here in District Three where I have Pioneer Road, um, we, we gave two options there, um, to go in, just make the repairs only, and then re-stripe it, or make the repairs, or then there's an additional cost to overlay it. So you've got Pioneer Road for ninety-eight thousand dollars, and you have Pioneer Road again for another sixty-nine thousand dollars. If you wanted, don't just overlay it without doing the fixing of the stuff, or fixing of the bad areas, so if you want to overlay it, then you got to spend a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, those two combined.
You have the combination, okay. Ms. Chairman, I'll take that.
Likewise, with Dairy, Dairy Road, you know, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to fix the failed areas, and another two hundred and forty-nine thousand to overlay it, so you'd be looking at six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to do. Likewise, on Olive Street, you'll see Olive Street for District Two and in District Five. Uh, District Two is for repair failing areas and do some limited pavement markings. Uh, the District Fives are certain intersection improvements, mostly along the side streets, because Olive Road there is, is not in too bad a shape, but we would kind of redo the intersection to fix those side roads. Uh, because Stafford Street and Cherrydale Streets are two intersecting roads, and they're really bad shape, so. Uh, but we would go back about a hundred feet from the intersection, so we're not like redoing the whole road in this cost. So, that being said, write out three million dollars worth of work, you know. Then, uh, it boils down to, how do you guys want to divvy up the, the Elmeg money, so that we can make the application?
Well, I want a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Well, I want three hundred and eighty-eight.
Ms. Chairman, I, 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 on Pioneer Road, I mean, if I could get the ninety-eight thousand, then I'm willing to put into sixty-nine with some S P O S money.
Gotcha.
So that way I could get that road completed.
You won't be able to do but one?
Yeah, I'd get that done right, and then maybe by the couple years, Dairy Road, I, I'll have enough in S P O S, and then T S P O S will kick in. Now that we got some numbers here, but if that's.
I'm being quiet to add, while we're going along, sir.
Don't, don't, no, you need to subtract.
You're right, I tell contractors all the time, you know, my, my, uh, job is the minus button, their job is the plus button, mine's the minus button.
But that, that would be if District.
If we did, so those two, Pioneer Road, the ninety-eight thousand dollars for Pioneer Road, the one forty-nine for Mount Olive Church Road, um, that's two hundred and forty-eight thousand, so that leaves us.
If I can get ninety-eight into where, yeah, I can, I can make sure of that.
Yeah.
Close to that, close to a hundred, mine.
Yeah, no, what I'm trying to say is, is, we, we, have, that's not taking up all our Elmeg money.
Yeah, if we could each get a hundred, I mean, I'll take the hundred.
Yeah, that's what it is. You never had Commissioner Gillit, have you, you?
Yeah, what, we're going to split it?
We're going to split it.
Four ways?
Four, yeah, four ways. Uh, one hundred, one hundred, one hundred, one hundred, and then who needs, I'll take the fifty, sixty-nine.
Okay, hold on, let's, I'm going to make sure you understand something, real quick. So it's the amount we get Elmeg money, is three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Three fifty-three.
The match.
All right, so that's eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars of Elmeg money, and then the remaining amount would be.
From the county match.
Divided it four ways.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear, so.
Okay.
The Elmeg money is eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighteen cents, that's the three fifty-three, six seventy-six, seventy-two divided by four. And then we're going to do that through which districts?
One.
Five.
Five.
Five. One, three.
Five, four, three.
Four and five, one, three, four, five.
One, three, four, and five.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'm just curious on that, um, Trent, um, I was, I didn't put anything in there, because I looked at what the cities, how their priorities were, you know, where they were going to be at, knowing that I was getting some money, but how does these roads right here go with the roads that's stored by you and Clint? I mean, are we, we're not passing none of those, are we?
Like, uh, you're talking about our, our, um.
You know, they live.
The rating sheet that we had over years ago, um.
It feels like there was a road somewhere, and it might have been a Chris district, like, um. Jane Lane, or some, there was a road, or somewhere that you were talking about.
Yeah.
It was going to be on a priority list.
Yes.
Might have been off a harm, I mean, off of, uh, was it Harm Ray Road that you were going to pave? I thought it was on a list.
We, we looked at paving Harm Ray Road.
It's, it's kind of like she was saying earlier, though, some of those T S P O S will address.
Yes.
This is just.
I, I will say this, one thing that we probably need to do, um, is go through exercise of reevaluating and updating our priority list. For instance, you know, we've, we spent the last four or five years working on Lewis Fraser Road, and we've got a lot of Lewis Fraser Road fixed, there's a short section, but, you know, if you look at it now compared to, like, Bill Carter Road, and I, I'm using those as just examples, because, I mean, I drive them.
It's a real good example.
You know, those are the good examples where Bill Carter Road would probably pop up on the list where it was further down before, and there'll be other roads in different districts that'll pop up differently than they did because I believe it's been six or seven years since we did that. I mean, it's been a long time.
I didn't think it had been that long. It's been that long?
It's been at least five.
It's been a while.
Been at least five.
Marion's had a lot done.
But, but next year, this time, we'll, we'll be, we'll be, um, preferably have some more Elmeg monies to distribute.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So when you, when you, when you, when you link that with what, once T-splosh starts coming in, and then some of you still have money in your splosh account, so we should be able to, I mean, we can't get them all.
We can just knock them out a few at a time.
Yeah.
So, okay, so what I have is we're gonna divide the Elmeg money four ways, Districts one, three, four, and five. Eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, no, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Eighty-eight thousand each, is that?
Eighty-eight, four, one, nine, point, one, eight.
Eighty-eight.
Thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Four hundred nineteen, point, one, eight.
Okay.
Okay.
Not eight hundred thousand, I said that wrong.
All right.
The match will just divide by four.
Yes.
Twenty-six, five, twenty-five, seventy-five is what they don't come out of each district account.
Do you know how much the city of Hinesville got?
I can look it up. It's on the, it, there's a spreadsheet that the department puts out every year, and I can look it up and tell you what it is. I'll sit back down in a minute when y'all are doing something else, and I'll try to look it up and I'll text it to you.
They, they pave in now Hinesville is...
Yeah, they have some Elmeg money that they're doing now.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
I don't know if it's this year's money or last year's money. So, yeah, we spent all of our last year's money.
Uh, do we need, uh, Mr. Brown, do we need, let's see. Do, 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 do this. Uh, it's a start by, that's, that's all the thing we're voting on from you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Me.
Okay. All right. Chair, entertain a motion then.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve
Elmeg.
The Elmeg request from each district. And we're gonna split the Elmeg, uh, amount for 2021 by four districts. That'd be one, three, four, and five. And the match would be split for those four districts also.
Which is eighty-eight, four, nineteen.
I guess so.
The match is twenty-six.
All right.
Second that.
It's motion and a second.
Second it.
Want to say something, sir? I see you.
Yeah, I, go ahead and vote, and I just want to make, I want to ask for clarification on which projects we're doing when we threw the vote.
Okay, all right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please, for that split.
Okay, so for Commissioner Thrift, Pioneer Road is the one that I see for you.
That is correct. And if there's a balance, take it out of my splosh.
Yes, ma'am. For Commissioner Bowen, it's Mount Olive Church Road. For Commissioner Stevens...
It's gonna probably have to be Yelman's Road. We got a deal.
Okay. And for Commissioner Gillard?
Well, I mean, I, I don't have a, a nothing.
You're gonna have to do both of them.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wanna do both of them.
Okay.
I just have to get the, on some, uh, sales tax for the, for the remaining.
Okay. All right. I think I got this all squared away now. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Mr. Long?
Yes, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are we ready, will we be pretty well ready at the next time you come back on Yelman's Road?
Oh, yes, sir. I can be ready anytime. I'll be honest with you, all I need is about three days of work to change the left side from curb and gutter to roadside ditch, and I'm ready to roll.
Hit the ground running.
Thank you. Thank you, be ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll start pulling that together.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
And Government Agreement, Confinement Services.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, basically between Liberty County for the jail services we provide for federal prisoners, uh, those taken from Hunter Army Airfield in Fort Stewart. We've been holding them for a while. Had an old agreement in place, this one replaces that, our new format that they liked. Uh, they've looked over it, Sheriff's looked over it, Kelly Davis has looked over it and offered comments, and so has JAG at Fort Stewart. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, the rate right now in the first annual period is sixty-nine dollars a day, uh, per, per inmate. At the end of that annual performance period, there does, there is a review that takes place to see what that cost is actually at that time. So we do get a chance to do that. The term of agreement is one-year periods that can be extended for nine additional periods. Uh, either party can terminate with a hundred and eighty days' notice, so we're not locked into that. And those are the basics of the agreement. I'm gonna be glad to answer any other questions.
Hey, Chris, Mr. Brown.
Sixty-nine dollars a day?
Currently, sixty-nine, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What, how do y'all feel about that?
See, it is currently, is it, is it going up or the...
Well, that's what the actual cost is right now.
That's the cost.
On average for the inmates, and then every year, we'll take a look at it and adjust it for what the actual cost is for the prior year.
Okay, okay, so you're gonna look at it annually?
Annually, it gets looked at for renewed again. And that's in, um, on page two under the terms of the agreement.
Do we have the, do, do the county have to save bed space for Fort Stewart if it's not used?
Uh, no, sir. Well, there, there's no, there's no...
Guarantees of...
No, no guarantee of bed space in here. It's just if we have bed space, we'll take them, if not, they'll take them to Savannah. But they'd rather, they'd rather take them here, obviously, to do that.
Joey.
I'm sorry, well, federal marshals, uh, we do, if, if we have them, we'll reserve some bed space for them.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Gill?
Well, yeah, the, uh, the sixty-nine for the bed space, and that's, that's, um, that includes everything that you do while you're down there, don't it?
That includes everything that we do. Now, uh, if, if there is anything, one, one of their prisoners requires, uh, extreme medical care, this is just basic medical care, uh, aspirin, doctor visit, because that's on, that's on site, as you know, we contract for that, then they will come and get them and transport them to Fort Stewart and bring them back.
And they, and the food and everything that's...
That's built in.
Oh, that's built in.
Mainly, mainly just food, a, a certain percentage for that medical, the minor medical, and an employee cost embedded in there.
Tele TV.
We don't do any transportation back and forth, so anything that, any kind of transportation services, the military would provide.
What about if it's a military person that's involved in something within the county?
Well, if the, if it, if it, if the crime occurs off of the installation, it's our case anyway. It'd be our prisoner.
I'm just glad that we were able to get that business back.
Yeah.
We, we have...
Made a big difference in our bottom line when it was not...
And we do have bed space.
Yeah.
Which, which is good.
Yeah. All right, Chair, entertain a motion.
Yes, sir.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion, second. We approve the government agreement as presented by our county administrator. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. The government agreement is approved. Radio bids.
Ms. Chair, we put, uh, bid out for twenty-three radios for our emerging fire department. Uh, we received two bids from two vendors. Those were Motorola Solutions and Williams Communications. Uh, Motorola Solution, their bid amount was one fifty-four, five twenty-four, thirty-one. After reviewing it and, and looking at the calculations, they overbidded, and we adjusted so that amount was adjusted back to one hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-one, uh, and thirty-one cent. Uh, Williams Communication, uh, submitted a bid of ninety-nine thousand, five seventy-six and forty-four. After reviewing them closely, we recommend to the board that they were, uh, award the contract to Williams Communication for twenty-three radios and ancillary equipment.
So, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, actually, we're getting more radios from, what was the name of the company now?
Williams. Williams Communication.
Okay, we're, we're getting more radios from this company than what we were getting from Motorola. Am I correct?
Well, I believe it's the same number of radios, but it is, it is at a cheaper price.
I thought, when it first started off, I remember it was eighteen.
And, and that might have, um... Yeah, and, and we, we didn't know. I, I mean, I think that, that was adjusted prior to the bid.
Right, okay.
So, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, we, we, we reevaluated, I think, how many were actually needed.
Right.
And that's when we increased it prior to the bid.
Okay.
But, but it is a much better price.
All right, okay, yeah. Because actually, we had budget, what, one fifty-seven?
I think it was around one fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven or one fifty-nine?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it is a budgeted item, by the way.
Right.
It's been approved by the commission.
Okay.
All right.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, go with, um...
Williams.
Williams Communication to purchase radios for emergency service fire department.
Second.
Motion and a second, we approve the bids presented for Williams, uh, Communications in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents. Any further discussion on that? If there's been none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Bid is approved.
Mr. Gill, we was talking the other day, maybe we need to get us some radios, you reckon?
I want, I, I need one for each.
Y'all want all that?
You can have it.
All right.
I think enough in the budget.
Debris removal.
No, I just don't have it just to hear what's going on.
Alanhurst. Bringing it back to order. Debris removal, City Alanhurst.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Chairman, this is, uh, you know, as you know, we've got a standby debris removal company, uh, for disaster, and what we do is ask the cities whether they want to be part of that agreement with us so that we can handle debris in their municipalities. So this is an agreement to do that, uh, inside of Alanhurst. Do believe, and I've got, um, Mr. Logan checking on this, but I do believe all the other municipalities have also agreed to do that. So it's just a formality, uh, to bring them on board under that umbrella.
Okay. All right. Chair, entertain a motion. Who claims Alanhurst?
I do. So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second? Motion and a second, we approve the debris removal contract with the City of Alanhurst, hoping we won't have to use it. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please.
Mm-hmm.
Motion passes. Commissioner Bow is out of the room. Board appointments. Committee, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Defex?
For the defects board, uh, the chairman, um, committee met, and, uh, we have, oh, had two applicants, Ms. Brittany Frazier and Ms. Dominique Sibley, um, to re, um, fill the unexpired term of Ms. Kathy Atkins. And by majority vote, um, we nominate Ms. Brittany Frazier.
Brittany Frazier is being nominated to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Kathy Atkins for the defects board. The chair would entertain, somebody make that into a motion, please.
Yes, sir, I'll second that, please.
If you will, I, I'll take his recommendation, so if you would make the motion, Commissioner Walter?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion, second, we have Ms. Brittany Frazier to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Kathy Atkins. Any further discussion? If there's been none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Ms. Frazier is appointed. Thank you, committee. Medicare Advantage policy.
Yes, sir, we, we had some discussion about, um, extending, possibly extending some Medicare Advantage insurance coverage for, as, as, um, as part of retirement for elected officials who had completed at least two complete terms in office. And so what's provided to you there is a monthly cost and an annual cost, um, for doing so. Just, uh, just as a reminder, as far as direct budgetary impact, having to complete two full terms, obviously not all doing that at one time, uh, I hate to kind of bring this up, the attrition rate for people that are currently on the plan, going off the plan, and some of those type things. We don't anticipate a tremendous budgetary impact on that, but it would be, if the board chose to do that, it would be a cost of, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents. And another note, it would be only for the employee or the, uh, elected official. So it would not cover family coverage for them unless they chose to...
Bless you.
Damn.
To buy up and do that. So, again, our recommendation, uh, based on, based on the review we've done, is this minor to the budget over some period of time, and, uh, don't feel like there'd be any problem in trying to do that.
Is there a handout for Joy?
Yeah.
Um, yes, sir, it was.
I don't have a copy.
We, we don't have it, Joe.
Sorry, you didn't get a copy of that.
That's okay.
It's, and, and it really just says, uh, four hundred and seventy-eight, eighty-five a month, whi- which is fifty-seven, forty-six, twenty a year. Again, they would have to be enrolled in Medicare Part B and be paying that themselves, and this is just a supplemental plan, is all this is.
This, this plan, Mr. Brown, as we had earlier discussed, this would be for the entirety of their life?
Oh, that's correct. It would, well, it would be as long as they're enrolled in Medicare Part B.
Yeah.
Which, unless the government changes that, would be for...
Be rare.
Well, let me say this, there, there is no requirement that you have Medicare Part B, okay? So employees can opt not to do that. So employees can opt not to do that. If they, for some reason, opt not to do that, then they wouldn't be eligible for this. But if they have Medicare Part B and continue Medicare Part B, then they would be eligible for this coverage.
Okay, now, this was what we ondid back in 'oh nine, correct? More or less?
Actually, a little different. Um, that, that had more of a budgetary impact. That was, that was countywide.
Mm-hmm.
That, it wasn't the same thing. What you did was, for a budgetary concern, over about three hundred and seventy-five people, was you discontinued providing full health coverage for them. So it used to be a standard health plan option for retirees, more costly, obviously, than this, because it wasn't a supplemental-type plan. That's what you really discontinued back then, was post-retirement benefits for all employees, full coverage, no partial coverage. So this is, it puts back in some partial coverage for some folks, but it, it is a supplemental versus full insurance.
Last question is, we don't see, probably not this board, I don't know, we don't see where this could come back and be effective for the employees again, or it would be too costly.
It would be up to the board as to whether the board wanted to try to look at costs associated with putting that back in countywide as a post-retirement benefit under certain stipulations. But that'd be totally up to the board. And another note, I think what had been discussed was looking forward and not backward, and so there's no backward look. It would be anybody that leaves office effective, really effective January or end of December of this year, completed two full terms going forward.
But let's say everyone up here, we would be in good shape. Including Commissioner Gillard. He's the youngest one out there tonight.
I don't think. That might be Conny, I don't.
I hope you're in good shape medically, and I hope you're not fixing to retire at the end of December. But you'd be in good shape.
Well, that's, um, I'm sure that there's gonna be people that's gonna fall behind us, but I think the way things are going, folks, the grand jury wound up having to point people to serve in these positions before too many years, because you don't have that many people interested in, in what we're doing. And I think anything that you can offer that would have people that's interested in staying in these, I mean, you get a supplement, be here at your front, but the benefit to an elected official is more than anything is to have some type of insurance. Not to say people ought to get elected to, for their insurance, but you need something to try to hold good people where they're at.
Point well taken, sir. Point well taken.
I mean, I got good insurance, but, um, that's paid for, and I'm just saying that this is an addition. Will you entertain a motion?
I will.
I'll make a motion going forward with this, Mr. Brown.
Your second?
Second.
Motion and second, we approve the Medicare Advantage policies explained by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? There'd be none, all in favor, we'll raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passed.
One opposed.
Going forward, right, sir?
One opposed, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thought I had to go up. Administrative report.
Yes, sir, I don't have a lot for you. Just a quick update. Fire station at Islands is on schedule, remains on schedule, probably looking at doing a final punch-out down there and a review in about three weeks. So next time I come back to you after that review, we'd like to entertain some notion of a ribbon-cutting ceremony down there. We've got furnishings and everything ordered.
I won't miss that one.
And so we're, we'll be good there. Uh, the other thing, just to tell you real quickly, is that working with Mr. Long on a couple of things, trying to finish the master plan to present to you a proposed master plan for Miller Park redo, that includes some convenient center expansion areas, and I'll come back to that in just a second. It also includes layout for the new master station. So when I was with Mr. McCall today, told him we'd be getting him a review of some plans that he did early on to try to gel with all that. We do have a meeting set up next week with Mr. Wells and Johnny from, from down at Solid Waste and Kathy to talk about expansion or look at, at things for convenience centers countywide. So that, that's part of that effort, too. Mr. Culbertson gave us some initial numbers last week related to solid waste fees, and I want to make sure we capture any expansion cost in the capital plan in there. So, so all that's ongoing. The other thing, I didn't know whether, whether the board won't entertain it tonight. We took some bids on some station renovations for the Lake George Station, and we are coming back next week. I think they can probably wait until next week. We did have a good bid on that, what we consider, which is around thirty-three thousand dollars to do that. That is one of the stations that we're prepping for sleeping quarters, so the sooner we can do that, the better. But now that I think about, we'll be doing the agenda for next week, so we'll be back next week. It'll be okay to wait till then.
Well, remember that we need to change next week.
Okay. Well, maybe we all look at that.
Maybe I'll look at it. Yeah, the chair, I don't have a conflict. I need to take a class on the fifteenth, so I was going to ask the commission that we could just move the, the meeting from the fifteenth to the twenty-second. Drop it down one third, sir.
Twenty-second?
Yes, ma'am. Would that work for everybody?
I think I can get off that.
They can get off that?
We need to vote on that.
We don't really need to vote on that.
That's good for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I appreciate it.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, what we did, and I didn't anticipate redoing that, and if you wanted to, we got two bids on those station improvements down there. What they are is standing up some sheet rock walls, doing a little heating and air work to basically create two sleeping sections down there at that station, which is, which is where a crew is located or gonna be located. Those two bids came back in. There were two of them submitted. One was RDC Construction Services out of Long County, forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The other was Low Country Builders, fifty-six thousand, four ninety. Our recommendation is to go with RDC Construction Services. They actually are run by the same folks that used to be in charge of all of Holland and Holland's projects. Scott Coe, and, and his work. So I do, I'm very familiar with their work. They do good work. That is a budgeted item for you, under this current year's budget for renovations for that station.
And it's doing sheet rock work, you said?
It is, it's a combination, sheet rock, some flooring, uh, door, minor modifications, not to the wall, just to create basically some sleeping area.
Okay.
Really what it is.
Okay.
What did we do with the, uh, the water problem? We got it? No, I'm thinking about the Fleming Station, too.
Oh, yeah, well, this is Lake George Station.
Yeah, this is the Lake George.
I would have to get back to Mr. Long on the water. I know we were talking about a sock drain, installation of a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I'm.
Yes, sir, that's okay.
All right, listen, let's Mr. Brown explain that that wasn't on tonight's agenda, but he'd like us to address the work at Lake George for forty-three thousand, five hundred, sir?
Forty-three, five, yes, sir.
Forty-three, five. Chair, I'll make that motion if you're ready.
Your second?
Okay.
Motion and second, we approve the bid for forty-three thousand. What's the name of the company? I didn't say it in a little wishy, but.
RDC Construction.
RDC Construction.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion passed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we did open up the window for entertaining historic cultural applications. We got eight of those back, so I know that you and Commissioner Gilliard, and I believe Commissioner Stevens.
It's been so long.
Is on that, um, so I'd like to get with you all if we can before we leave about a date to review those.
Okay.
And make a recommendation back. Uh, other couple of quick things is, Commissioner Stevens, in fact, reminded me this week that we had talked about getting the county attorney to, to relook at our charter. It has some age on it. It needs some revision, so it's okay with the board. I'll go ahead and reengage him. I think you actually talked about that at a planning session.
We did.
And the other thing that, that has, that has come up is looking at, maybe looking at the sign ordinance, it's not related to billboards, and we obviously can do that, too. But I, I was thinking one time there was a sign, there was a provision in the ordinance that talked about removal of political signs. Not necessarily how many or what size, but some kind of removal, placement on right-of-way and removal afterwards. But when I went back and looked, it's not there, and I know we've had some concern expressed about that, so, you know, if, if you wanted us to, I'd try to get with the county attorney and get him to, you know, try, try to work up something in the sign section of ordinances for that. Nothing, um, I always call it nothing harsh, but you got to recognize, too, that, you know, maybe a period of time after the election passes that the property owner needs to remove those signs. It would be up to the property owner to remove them.
Commissioner.
I always thought the, the opponent removed the signs.
Sometimes before, right? But, uh, but it's, uh, but just, just a couple of things to think about. Number one, the charter, number two, the signs, if you want us to just take a look at something.
Now, you, you're referencing signs on the right-of-ways, I mean, all the right-of-ways?
Well, you know, I looked at the ordinance. I thought there was something in there about placement of signs on the right-of-way anyway. I know there is on the state code.
Yeah.
But we don't have anything about signs on the right-of-ways. That's another issue.
I thought we had a, I thought we had an audit where you could place these signs on the county right-of-way.
Not in there.
Didn't, didn't, didn't see it.
No.
I thought, I remembered that it was set one time, handed out in the election office when you asked her to vote.
Uh-huh, but it's not there.
It's not there, and I don't know whether it escaped us when we went through the ordinance revisions or.
You ask Kelly to look at this, maybe?
I will, I will. That's, that's kind of what I'm asking. If we can just let Kelly take a look and.
I don't know how you determine where our county right-of-way is at. Well, if it's about that far off the roadway, you pretty much close.
The back slope of the ditch, the back slope.
I'm talking about something right there on the road. All these guys done insurance.
Oh, man.
But Joey, they, um, in a person's yard, they could, they could leave it there forever, couldn't they?
Really? Uh, I think so. I mean, I mean, the sign ordinance.
City's got something, right? Y'all had a big to do about that.
Yeah, they, they, they had something about signs, like yard sale signs and all kind of stuff like that, but I, I think they has, um, it was more about the number of signs, not, not how long it could stay. Like if, if I was running for office and my wife wanted to have a, have a yard sale, we had to decide which one we was gonna display. You know, I don't think you could have two. I think that's what the Heinzville ordinance was, but that was a while back. I don't know.
Have they changed that?
But, um, I was just saying, in somebody's yard, a political sign, you could put one there and just let it be there for.
Some people do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, our ordinance doesn't mirror that.
I saw one the other day for Elza Walter.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I just, I bring those up, what I'll do is, I'll get with county attorney on the, on the charter, because I know the whole board talked about that. And we'll do a little research on the sign stuff.
Okay.
And see what we can find that, that we've got in place for signs. And also in other cities.
Okay, all right, sir.
I got one question for Joey. The, the census, when, when is the deadline?
So, so now, uh, there was a court order signed that extended it to October thirty-first. Just approved yesterday, as a matter of fact.
I thought it was.
We got that announcement?
Yeah, we got.
It was this morning, yeah, we got that.
They kept moving it.
So it's been extended.
Commissioner Stevens.
Where are we with the statue over there? I know the law says one thing, we can't do this and we can't do that. Where, where are we at with that?
I, I think I can give you an update. The Historic Advisory Committee, who that was tossed to, um, has been conferring with the county attorney, has conferred with the daughters of Confederacy, or actually the owners of the sign. And so what they're prepping to do now is to have a public.
Hearing.
All-in session where folks can call in and express their opinion about relocation of the sign, and then the committee is prepared then to make a final recommendation to the board of commissioners. The other thing they're trying to also do is examine by law where it can be relocated to and go ahead and make some initial contacts with some of those folks so that once it comes to you, they're, they're coming to you with a recommendation, and if it's relocatable, then a potential place, too. You won't necessarily have to decide the place, but they want to go ahead and do that homework, and so that's what they're doing right now.
All right, anything else of good order? Chair, entertain the motion and adjourn.
Move.
Second?
Second.